You keep talking, I just want to change.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome you all to the Gochee City Council Meeting, tonight, Tuesday, August the 2nd, at 6:30 PM. It's great to have you all here, I ask that you please silence your cellphones or any other electronic devices, and stand for the pledge, prayer by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman At-Large Adam College.
Father God, it's about our heads before the night, we thank you for our many blessings, God, we ask you tonight for healing in the bodies of those tonight who need healing, God, we ask for your head's protection around our public works, our firefighters, our police, and really just all that work for the city and that live in this wonderful city, God. We thank you for this council, and we pray tonight for unity, God, in this council as we make decisions pertaining to the operation of the city tonight. We thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, his sacrifice for our sins on Calvary's cross, and we ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to our Agenda Order Approval, do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy?
Yes, sir, I need to add consent Agenda Item Number Eight, which is authorization to approve the execute the certificate of substantial deflation to the ultimate trial church and then for the service of the project, and then remove presentation items number two and three.
Any other changes by council? Do we have a motion to approve the Agenda Order Approval, adding Consent Number Eight, and removing Presentation Agenda Item Number One and Two?
So, move two and three, oh, no, one and two, no, three.
We got a motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor, motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our City Manager, Ms. Shancy.
The Gochee Farmer's Market will be on August 13th, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Bar. There's a free food distribution on Saturday, August the 20th, beginning at 10:00 AM at the Seagull River Mall property, it is drive-through, one bundle per bar. Tasty 30 will be August 25th, beginning at 11:00 AM at the Seagull River Mall property.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our Presentation Agenda, we have tonight, Gochee Mayor's Youth Council swearing-in ceremony, so as we call your name to the front, if you will come up, and then the City Manager will swear you in. We're glad to have you all here, the ones who applied and made it, it's going to be an honor to work with you all, and you were giving back to your community and showing interest, and that is a big part, y'all are our future leaders, so I encourage you after tonight that you still come attend some of our meetings, so you can see how the form of government works, and also you'll know what's going on to help stop the rumors going around in the community. And the Youth Council, I want to thank our City Manager for allowing our city staff, if it was not for her allowing a staff member to be the sponsor, we could not have our Youth Council. Councilman Gilat, when he was the mayor, tried to start this program, and we did not have the staffing at the time, when Mayor Torcheson became mayor, Ms. Shancy was able to work it in the budget and make it happen, and we're able to continue that, and I'm blessed in the council to be able to work with all of y'all. So once again, thank you to our city staff and our sponsors. So we will come to the front, as I call your name, if you will just come get your certificate in line-up. We have Anna Grace Adams, with Gochee High School. We have Talia Anderson, Resurrection Catholic School. We have Charlie Bernhardt, Gochee High School, and also will be the secretary. We have Harrington Morton, Gochee High School. We have Lillian Bernstein, who will, Gochee High School, and will also be the historian. We have Carlos Hannah, Resurrection Catholic School. We have Alina Clayton, Gochee High School. We have Alyssa Vayor Demasia, Gochee High School. We have Peja Breitman, Gochee High School. We have Scholar Gallivan, Gochee High School. Sierra Harvey, Gochee High School, and will also be the President of the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council. We have Katie Jamison, Gochee High School, and will be the Vice President of the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council. Wesley Joe, Gochee High School. Jayla Johnson, Gochee High School.
Y'all must be over there.
Elizabeth MacArthur, Gochee High School. Joy Mams, Gochee High School. Ashlyn Nguyen, Gochee High School. April Nguyen, Gochee High School. Autumn Nixon, Gochee High School. Madison Parker, Gochee High School. Jayden Perkins, Gochee High School. Maya Peterson, Gochee High School, and will also be the Outreach Coordinator for the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council. Evan Belles, Gochee High School. Daniel Perkins, Resurrection Catholic School. I'm sorry, that was Perkins, I'm sorry. Brooke Roberts, Gochee High School. And Creole Ward, Gochee High School. And if we can have the council stand up.
I want to get short people up front.
Them stand up while you're swearing.
Look at the middle, y'all.
That one right here, all right, three, two, one, three, two, one. We're going to have Ms. Shancy swear y'all in now, and then we'll get a photo with the sponsors and the change to them, and the City Attorney.
Okay, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, state your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The mission of the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council.
The mission of the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council.
That I will strive to be a leader.
That I will strive to be a leader.
Among Gochee youth.
Among Gochee youth.
That I will conduct myself.
That I will conduct myself.
In a way that reflects positively.
In a way that reflects positively.
Upon the city of Gochee.
Upon the city of Gochee.
That I will obey the ordinances.
That I will obey the ordinances.
Of the city of Gochee.
Of the city of Gochee.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding a position.
From holding a position.
On the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council.
On the Gochee Mayor's Youth Council.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now we're going to get the City Manager, City Attorney, and the sponsors to join us up.
Hold up here, Josh.
They say they're taller than you are.
Hey, you want to get in the middle, say, you're important, come on.
I want you to press, don't be mad at me. All right, three, two, one, three, two, one. Once again, I encourage you all to say if you would like, you don't have to say, but I encourage you because it is a short meeting tonight, but as I said earlier, we're blessed to have each one of you, you all making great, you know, you got to represent us well, and I look forward to us having some fun, Mayor's Youth Council activities this coming year, and doing great community support and outreach in our community to get our citizens and youth access in Gochee. So y'all, once again, congratulations and thank you. If you need myself or the council, you reach out to any one of us, we're blessed to have y'all, your interest in the city once again. And thanks to the parents for encouraging your student, your children, to participate in the program, because they will learn a lot about government, and how the day-to-day of the city is running, so thank you for allowing them to participate. Does the council want to say anything?
Mayor? I have an item for each one of y'all to do, before y'all all really get started, I want you to do two things, this is homework. I want you to go home and study Robert's Rules of Order, and also look up the ordinances in this city, so you will understand. You can get the ordinances off the website, you can get Robert's Rules of Order off of Google.
And our form of government. And how our form of government.
And how our form of government works. You can also look that up on the state website. Homework, okay? Get it all done before school starts, what, tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday?
Thank y'all again.
I don't talk, I ain't said, I asked him, they used to have a microphone, I thought there's something special to be hanging there.
It's got a standing thing, but you're standing.
Listen to the microphone. They are like, we believe in them. Okay, now that some of the Youth Council have left in their families, and some have stayed, we will move forward with the Business Agenda Item Number One. Approval of an ordinance to assess the fee of $1 for each document filed as public records pursuant to the Mississippi Code Anointed 25-60-5.
Yes, sir, I received a letter from the Mississippi Department of Archives at history, stating that the city was not collecting the $1, and stating that we were required to do so. I looked up the statute, and after looking at the AG's opinion, because the statute actually has a place, and I believe I attached it, where it says in Section 2, "The fee provided in subsection 1 shall not be collected in any county until the board supervises a resolution spread upon its minutes determines that it collects the fee." So I took that to mean that the county wasn't collected, we didn't have to, but I looked up the AG opinions, and they interpreted that statute to require the city to collect the $1, and that it's optional with the county. The $1.50 of it will have to be remitted to the state, but $0.50 of it will be able to be retained by the city, but we'll have to keep track on it, there's a list on the back of this, of very back page, what we can spend the money on, that we get to retain, and then on the next to the last page, it has the records that we will add the fee to. When we're talking about this today, the thing that really would apply to us, the most would be in the planning department, so the statute requires that you collect the fee.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion approval of an ordinance to assess a fee of $1 for each document filed as a public record pursuant to Mississippi Code 25-60-5.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
Documents that are filed, are they going to be held here in the city, or do they go to the county?
Yes, only the fee is going to the state, the $0.50.
Yeah, but I mean, if you were filing a document, where's the document held?
The documents are, like when you'll get a building permit, if we keep the documents, they just want an extra dollar added.
To what we're already doing?
So they get their $0.50, sir.
What we're already doing?
In other words, if you're charging right now, and I'm just making this up, $20 for a building permit, then it'll be 21, and $0.50 of that extra one will go to the state, and $0.50 will go to your document fund, as required by statute. It adds a dollar to every, pretty much everything he collects in the planning department, I'll add $1 to it.
But if somebody comes in the city and wants to file some letter, they can't do that?
No, sir, it won't have a fee, it's just things that we charge for.
Okay.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Two, approve the replacement of eight galvanized culverts on Simpson Drive.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Shancy.
Simpson Drive has some flooding issues, and after Russell and Ramona went out and looked at it, it is caused by the culverts. I think just development over time has caused the drainage to need a different kind of culvert. Under the law, you cannot replace the culvert, replace one person's culvert for the benefit of that property owner, for example, you had your house out of culvert, and it just corroded and needed replacing, we can't replace that culvert. But you can replace culverts if you make a finding that it is more the preservation and the relief of flooding of the street, and it's due to development conditions, and that is why your resolution may be warranted a little differently than what you're used to seeing, but the council has to make this finding in order for clear water to go in there and fix the culvert, so the street will not flood and drain properly.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the replacement of eight galvanized culverts on Simpson Drive.
We got a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
Are we going to put galvanized back, we going, what we going back with?
HPD.
Say again?
That's the kind, HPD, price of five.
Are they going to be larger than what's there? Understand, the ones that's there, most of them's collapsed.
Yes.
So what size will be putting back in it?
18 inches.
18 inch, okay, thank you.
Councilman Gilat? Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
These culverts, are these culverts that are going into private driveways, homes?
So, the culverts are in the city right-of-way, and that's what enables the driveway to cross city right-of-way.
Into the people's driveway.
Right, but that right-of-way is what drains your street. Those culverts have collapsed, so that it's not draining, it's flooding the road and washing it out.
What are these people going to say, that we made them buy their culverts, and we put them in for them, but they had to purchase them?
Because it's not just people whose culverts are collapsing, that's one property owner, you know, it's not causing the street to flood, and we can't, when your culvert wears out, you have to, if you buy, clear water will come and put it in to ensure that the drainage is proper.
Right, right.
But this has been this way for years, and due to the continued development of that driveway over time is kind of what caused this. So in that situation, the law says if you make those findings, that you can put it in to preserve your street.
Who made the findings that there was flooding, causing the flood and the problem? Clearwater?
Clearwater, and Ramona went out there and looked at it, but you actually have to make the findings based on the recommendation.
Okay, that's all the way up.
Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Three, Authorization to Enter into Professional Services Agreement between 46 Entertainment, Inc., and the city of Gochee, by Ms. Shancy.
This is a contract with 46 Entertainment, Josh and I got the documents from Brandon, and the processes that other cities have used, that are doing something similar. The difference here is Brandon actually had a contract before the pre-construction, what is it called, pre-construction agreement, where they had to pay somebody as a consul. 46 Entertainment has actually done that for you, for you. So what this does is, is it's basically simultaneous, well, close to simultaneous, with your awarding bids, that you authorize going out for bids, it's important that when the bids are awarded, that you need positions to market your amphitheater, and to do all the things that are outlined in this agreement, some of which are assist with sponsorship packages, assist with design questions, just to give you an example, he's been making sure that the deans will hold the lights, that the shows bring in, the amps that require the sound where it's placed, so it doesn't reverberate back, things like that, he's been working with the architect and the electrical engineers to make sure that the design will support the shows. Really, the pre-opening marketing services are outlined on the B&amp;B Article Two, this really sets forth the services, the pre-marketing services, provide detailed strategic report on spending of a marketing budget, creates amphitheater branding, a logo, he's going to create a website for it, provide social media promotion, create a separate website, develop and participate in a groundbreaking event, he's going to market it on a regional level in Nashville, not just a local level, and the next step after this is, after you get a little further along, would be a booking agreement, so this is the same kind of pattern that has been used by other cities who have had amphitheaters and had the same sort of contract. So this is not a booking contract, it's simply a marketing contract, for him to market your amphitheater to attract shows and interest in the show.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any citizen comments? No citizen comments? Do we have a motion by council?
Solemn.
Have a motion by Councilman George, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
I think this is a great move, and I want to commend Paul for her contacts and hard work. We previously had a development person that we dealt with, and they kind of phased out, we're kind of dealing with this guy now, Nathan Ball, and I've talked to him a bunch about what we plan to do, and what he's done, if you get a chance, look up his company, you can see what he does on a national level, I think this is going to be a huge asset to the city to have him on our side, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman George, Councilman Jackson?
Yes, when would the fees start coming, being, I guess, charged?
So what this is, is $6,500 a month, and then, and it's a, I believe, $50,000 marketing budget, and a $5,000 travel budget throughout the life of the agreement. So once the agreement is signed, and he starts performing those services, then the fees will start getting paid, but he probably will not begin performing the services until he award bid on the amphitheater, that is kind of when the marketing really needs to start, so I'm trying to make it synchronistic with each other.
So are we basically trying to make this money back from the use of the amphitheater? Like, I'm seeing, I'm seeing like you had the 50 and the 5,000 per month, or the 6,500?
This is not for booking shows, this is for promoting the amphitheater, so that there is interest in the industry to book national acts here, but it's not just that. If you have an amphitheater of this magnitude, there's money-making opportunities for the city, because you have sponsorships, name.
there's money-making opportunities for the city because you have sponsorships, naming rights, beverage packages, that sort of thing that brings in money to the city and he has expertise in that area and he's going to handle all that, along with the separate website, the marketing of it, the PR, everything. So ultimately, yes, you are going to get money when people are interested in or booking national shows.
Now, I ask question because I'm into music. So I'm familiar with this. I'm very familiar with this, with, you know, how to do this, but I just want to make sure I got everything correct. So he's not putting up any sound system, like any function?
No.
He's not doing any function, just basically trying to get other acts to come and maybe promoters or whatever to come?
Yes, and he's going to assist the city with the sponsorship packages. That money goes to the city. So those are things, the naming rights, that sort of thing, that stuff you do on the front end. You don't, he was telling us when we was meeting with us, that the biggest mistake that is made is people wait till after something's built to go out and market it. You can market it along. So the goal here is when your amphitheater is constructed and it's complete, you will have a show.
Already have a show going.
You'll already have a show booked for that, yes. And plus, he has been very invaluable in far as the assisting the architect and designing things. We're talking about sound systems. We're not putting sound and lights and that sort of stuff for the shows, but they bring all that in themselves. But he's been key in saying, for lack of a better word, I'm not an architect, but what weight that beam needs to hold, to hold the lights, how far above it needs to be.
Put a line around it.
The amps, all that kind of stuff to support the sound system, that sort of thing.
Okay. All right, so last question. Say for instance, someone, they want to do their own show, like you got other people, like I know a few promoters, that's why I'm asking. If they want to do their own shows and function, they're not being charged by this company. It will be charged from the City of Goche. Am I correct?
The only booking contract would be, and we're not there yet, the only contract you would have with him would be non-exclusive. This amphitheater is designed to be used by the community. You know, if we want to have like the songwriters come play or if some promoter was to put on some show, then he would deal directly with the city. But Nathan would continue to assist us with his expertise in how to negotiate that contract. But no, he would not be making money off of it.
Okay. Sounds good.
That's all, Councilman.
That's all.
Councilman Gallot?
Councilman Ward One Cameron mentioned that we had another promoter that was doing this job and he's gone. And now we have Nathan, right? This is a total different contract, right?
No, sir. We never had a promoter for the amphitheater. We had had someone promoting the city for economic development. Like I had told you before, this is the first, he has always been in on this from the ground up. And he would have been here tonight, but he's putting on Rockin' the South in Coleman, Alabama this weekend, so he could not.
I guess what I was referencing when I made that comment was we met Nathan through that guy.
We did.
That we had as economic development. I should have quite read that, but.
I pulled them both to the hip together, so.
Okay. I'm good. Okay. Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No.
I just want to thank Paula and the staff for working with them. This is a big part of our economic development boost here in the City of Goche to attract other development on the old belated Singin' River Mall properties. So we thank you for continuing your efforts in that direction. So we have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consideration for abatement at 3309 Havel Drive Road, Goche, Mississippi, Janus, Goche, PID number 81831190.000 by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting City Council to hear and approve this abatement for 3309 Havel Road. This abatement would include removing trash and debris piles, helping maintaining the grass, and securing the doors to the abandoned property. So decision's been made to remove this trash, rubbish and debris. It's causing amends to the neighborhood's residents, two of whom have requested assistance from the city to clean the property and ensure the safety of the neighborhood. We have sent public notices. When we posted the property, public notices, we've sent notices to the owner. And all reasonable steps have been taken to ensure the property owner may just be provided with that, and everything. And what the city intends to do if this abatement's approved tonight. This is for the welfare of the neighbors and the other residents on the street. Code enforcement requests that council approve this abatement. And if approved, council may charge the cost as a lien against the property to be collected upon sale of the property, collect the cost of civil proceedings, add $1,500 or 50% to give it a collection amendment. I've included in the memorandum, pictures of the property, which are the free well-sufficed plan door. You can see the debris piles and garbage that are piled at the property. I've also included the partial information and the public notices for your review. I'm here to answer any questions. Also, we have been important officer taken. He would answer any specific questions on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. We got any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement at 3309 Havel Road, Goche, Mississippi, with the cost of the abatement being placed as a lien against the property and to implement a penalty, assess the property amount of $1,500, 50% of the actual cost of cleaning the property, whichever is more.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallot. Any discussion? Starting with Councilman George.
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Was the owner just absent or something? Because I seen it, it does obey it, so.
From what we understand, this is just, we're not sure about this. The owner was placed in a nursing center.
Okay. Got it. No further comment.
Councilman Gallot?
Did I read it here? The taxes have been kept up on this property?
Yes, sir. The taxes aren't currently paid.
By the owner?
By family member.
Some family members?
Yes. Any other? That's it. Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes, the lady was put in a nursing home, assumed by her family. Is there an agent? Is a family member or her agent on this or?
The family members are where? And the family members asked the city to go through this process.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I got.
I want to thank our planning department for working on this and helping the family member out that is trying to take care of his family member at his request. They did request. It does look belated. I think the family member has tried to get it cleaned up and hires local people, but the local people didn't take advantage of the family member trying to pay to get it cleaned up. So it's a sad situation altogether, but it does need to be cleaned up in the neighborhood and I appreciate code enforcement working with Mr. Goche, the family member on the property. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Authorization of change order number four. Summary for the Spanish Trail Goche Van Cleve Road Sewer Improvements Project Restore and Approval of the Final Pay Application by City Staff, Ms. Stennett.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is change order number four, which serves as the summary change order to increase the contract amount by $39,060.40. This increase is due to quantity adjustments that were largely attributed to weather, such as excess rainfall and standing water that inches leading to increased amounts of select field and the addition of a manhole and an emergency sewer tie-in. You may view the attachment on the change order. It shows all of the line item underruns and overruns for this summary change order. But we did hold a final walkthrough on Friday and noted deficiencies and about half of those have been fixed over the last two days by the contractor. Seymour Engineering has reviewed this final change order and the final pay app and recommends approval. And we also have Matt Kirkland here tonight if you have any questions for him.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stennett. Any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion by council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Mayor, can I just clarify that our motion is for approval of a change order and final pay application? And final pay application.
Yes, sir. Second. Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? Starting with Councilman George.
No.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gallot?
Yes. This is final pay for the contract. I don't know about bringing it up now, but consent agenda item eight, isn't this related to this?
Yes, sir. So the reason that we're doing it this way is because, and April can expand on this, but we have to type of work on in order for you to get reimbursed under your federal grant, restore grant. So that is why we went ahead and did the paperwork on. They are substantially complete, but they have a punch list left to complete, for final completion. They will not get their final check until they complete that punch list.
So they won't get this $39,000 until they complete this punch list?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
But you have not declared substantial completion yet and they are substantially complete. So substantial completion and final closeout, they are substantially complete, so.
I'm confused. It's consent agenda item eight says substantial completion.
Yes, sir.
So if we prove that tonight?
Wait down.
No, sir.
Yes, substantial completion, then you got final completion.
Thank you.
So substantial completion is they're substantially complete with the project. They have some punch list items to rectify before they can get their final payment.
I got another question. When is final completion required?
When they finish all of their punch list items, then they release the retainage and the final amount.
So whenever they complete all of the items, they will get this $39,000 even though we have proven it tonight?
Yes, sir. I don't have to release a check until the work's done.
Okay. Now I understand it.
I'm good. Councilman College?
Are we actually, what is the retainage on this? I'm trying to look sideways.
Matt?
Are we, have we still withheld retainage? We haven't released retainage yet, have we? I'm trying to look at the pay app to see where it is. Well, that's the change order. I'm looking at the pay app to see what retainage is. So that $1,976.536.39, that's retainage? That's still being withheld?
That's the contract.
That's the contract amount, so.
That's the whole contract now. I'm trying to find the.
We awarded 2.3 and the contract is 1.9.
Yeah.
$285.
The retainage says.
Well, that's his, that's his. Well, that's his pay up right here. Amount due to his pay up is $285,029 on that lineup. So I just want to make sure that we actually withheld retainage.
Yeah, we have the retainage. The final payout will include retainage and the additional summary change order and that's when we will release the retainage. That's why I was telling him, we're not releasing the check until it's done.
Until final completion is issued, okay.
Now, so this paper, the payout is actually supposed to be, when he's finally complete, this is how much, this is what he's getting.
Okay, so pretty much we're just saying, we're proving this in advance so that way when we issue final completion, we can release that check without having to wait for the next council meeting to get over.
Deadline for the grant.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, that makes sense. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes. Where would the difference of the 2.3 to the 1.9 million go to? The difference of the 2.3 awarded and we using 1.9?
No, sir. We contract now, the 2.3 that we got awarded included some other engineering, I believe, CCTV, video camering, which has already been done and completed. That was like the first phase before it could be designed.
So we're going to use the entire 2.3?
Yes, sir. The entire 2.3 plus about 69 of your own, 1,000 of your own money.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Couldn't get any more from the restore.
Okay, so our 69 that we had to use is our money?
Yes, sir.
That's on top of the 2.3?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That's all.
No comment. I just want to thank our city staff, Paula and April, Ramona, Clearwater. Good job. I know y'all been babysitting a lot, is all I can say. I've gotten a lot of complaints and y'all been out there. And I still, tonight, had a citizen concerned about the project. I'm still concerned about the project. So I hope, as Ms. Chancey stated, they get everything on their punch list because we drive that road every day. And the business owner is very concerned about how it is because of how they're going to maintain it. I hope Clearwater, y'all have a plan on how y'all going to get across to the manhole cover? We got a piece of equipment that can get over in that ditch? Okay. Just making sure. And I guess we know how we're going to keep the river rocks looking clean and fresh of litter and weeds for the funeral home, like they were told that we would do. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Six to one.
So you're first?
I'm first. I do. Approval of business agenda item number six. Approval of the docket of claims. Staff has already provided these by the city clerk, Ms. Montgomery. It's been on the website. It was on the docket. Do we have any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gallot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? Starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gallot?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda item. All items will be approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. One, approval of minutes from recess council meeting held July 19th, 2022. Two, received June 2022 finance reports. Three, approval of a business service agreement with Sparklight for Wi-Fi and Internet services at the Goche Police Department. Four, authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill 1353, 2022, regular legislative session funds to assist the City of Goche. Five, authorization to advertise for bid for water quality and infrastructure sewage project Goche Van Cleve Road, Gomesa. Six, approval to accept monetary donations for the City of Goche's Cruisin' Through the Decades event. Seven, approval of the wire transfer agreement between the City of Goche and Community Bank of Mississippi. And eight, authorization to approve and execute the certificate of substantial completion for the Old Spanish Trail slash Goche Van Cleve Road Sewer Improvement Projects. Does anybody want to pull one?
I'm going to pull four and five.
Councilman Anderson is pulling four and five. Anybody else want to pull any? So do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item number one through three and six through eight?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallot. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number four. Authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill 1353, 2022, regular legislative session funds to assist the City of Goche.
Well, if I can get through this tablet here and get the four.
You want me to explain what it is first or?
Okay, let's see something on here now. Okay, yeah. My question is, we're asking for them to transfer the money to us, the one point?
Five.
Five million?
We got money in two different ways. When we put all the documents to get the money we got for Town Commons, we didn't realize we had documents for the money we got for Shepherd. So these are the documents you have to approve to get your one point five million. I'm not sure April, under this, I mean, under this mechanism of getting state funds, do they transfer you, they go ahead and transfer you to funds and then you expend from there and report on it?
Okay.
As opposed to submitting for reimbursement?
Okay. My question is, have we done the design work on this, or are we going to start the design work after we get the money?
We're going to start. We've done some preliminary figures, but we're going to start the design work after we get the money. They had submitted a contract to me a couple months ago, and I didn't want to enter into a contract until I had the funds in the bank. So now we will go, this is for several things. Not now, it's for additional RV hookups. It's to, and I don't know the right words, what's the word, where it's sewer hookup, where you can just hook directly to cover rather than the way it is right now. It's for road improvements within there in certain places where the road is that white rock. It's to pave some of it. That's the majority of it. But the big ticket item, aside from the additional RV sites, is the actual ability to hook directly up to sewer in a RV.
It has to do with every site.
What I'm asking is, when we come up with some preliminary design, I think the council would like to see where the additional sites are going to be and how many and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir. We always bring the preliminary design to you when something's done.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't got that yet.
I mean, I haven't hired anybody to do it yet. Seymour Engineering has done all the preliminaries. They sent me a contract, but I wouldn't put it on the agenda until I had the money.
Okay, but they'll give us the money before we've even done the design?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another thing is paving. I know originally, the Shepherd family in donating this park to the state, and then the state gives it to us, would not allow any paving in there. So now we can pave in there?
Sir, I believe we went and looked at the actual restrictions or whatever kind of agreement it was, and it does not preclude paving. And we're not trying to pave the whole thing anyway.
Yeah, I understand.
Just a certain.
The main corridors, streets.
Certain areas, it washes extremely bad.
But we're allowed to do that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got on that.
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Let me get back up here. Authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill thirteen fifty-three, twenty twenty-two regular legislative session funds to assist the city of Gochet in paying costs associated with the expansion of RV sites and paving at Shepherd State Park, including but not limited to memorandum of understanding letter to D. A. Favor question funds transfer verification form and contract information form.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? Councilman George?
No comment.
Jackson?
No.
Gilat?
No comment.
College?
No comment.
Anderson?
No.
Elvin?
No.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number five, pulled by Councilman Anderson, authorization to advertise for bid for water quality and infrastructure sewer project Gochet Van Cleve Road Go Mesa.
Okay, I understand everything about this other than, let me see if we can get to here.
It's all page three fifty-seven.
Okay. It says in here that project will install so many linear feet along the Gochet Van Cleve Road and then trail, along Old Spanish Trail to the new pump station, to the new pump station located near Robertsdale Road. I wasn't aware of any new pump station near Robertsdale Road. It's not, it's not going to be a new pump station on the Gochet Van Cleve Road near Robertsdale Road, is it?
Matt?
I don't know. The only thing I know is they're going to, about this project, is it's going to a new JCUA lift station.
That, that's a, that's a present lift station?
Yes, yes.
That's, it's not, it's not new. I'm just wanting to make sure we're not putting a new lift station somewhere in between Highway ninety and that lift, that main lift station, JCUA.
Their new lift station.
Well, it's worded wrong then. It says near Robertsdale Road. And then further down in here, it says, it doesn't have that word new in there.
It is.
I just want to make sure there's not something come up new that I didn't know about. There's no new lift station being.
It's existing type.
If it is existing, that was a type.
Okay, all right. That's all I had on that. Thank you.
Motion. Do we have a motion, Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We all provide the authorization to advertise the bid for the water quality infrastructure sewer project Gochet Van Cleve Road Go Mesa.
We got a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
No.
Councilman College?
This is the next step in alleviating a lot of problems we have with the sewer overflows here in South Gochet. It's going to be a great benefit when it's finally done and completed.
Amen. Councilman Anderson?
Absolutely. This will prevent overflows all the way down the Gochet Van Cleve Road and all the way down Roberts Road that we've had over the years and just prevent that from happening for now. And our water quality and our values will go up real good. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Elvin, now? I just want to remind and thank our city staff for their hard work on this project and also the delegation approving us to receive the funding. With that, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. Number one is discussed citizen comments. You have three minutes. You can come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to make a comment. No citizen comment. Mr. Olson, you want to come to the front?
Mark Olson, twenty-five oh four, Robert Huron Drive, Gochet. Just wondering about an update on the never-ending Martin Road project, Martin Bluff Road, and if there's an end date for the Highway ninety paving?
We actually requested April bring in the engineers at the next meeting to forward update on where they stand.
Excellent. Also, Mark?
On both projects?
We've asked for an update on cleanliness of the project.
Very good.
Any other citizen comments? That brings us to our council comments. We start with Councilman George since it is the first meeting of the month. Councilman George?
Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank and congratulate everybody on the mayor's youth council. I appreciate you for staying throughout the meeting and seeing it happen. It's very nice for me to see this, the breath of fresh air. I started this when I was only twenty-three years old. I don't know how old you are, but I'm assuming, you know, if you're not far from that, I'm sure. So I mean, you know, as a younger kid, looking at something like this, you think it's so far away, but it's really not. And it's more attainable than you think, and it makes a bigger difference than you think. So I think participating in this is going to, is going to help all of you with graduating class be able to thrive a lot more as you graduate. And I really appreciate and look forward to what you do with April and the mayor and everybody else throughout this term that you'll serve. Other than that, I don't really have anything other than I'm really excited about sewer hookups to Shepherd State Road. I'm a camper, so I'm real, I'm happy about that.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yes, I'm just update again on Baycott. We had a job fair. It went well. Got a hundred and fifty-plus people to get hired on. Most of them, of course, was at the English Ship Building. Um, it was a, it was a workout, you know. I'm just telling you. I almost thought we was overwhelmed. But it pulled through. Everything went well. The objectives that we were striving to obtain, we, we working, is working towards that. My main thing was areas like the apartment complex, getting the people to work and giving them better jobs, better opportunities, so they won't be in a mindset of stuck in one place but moving forward. And sometimes you just have to give people a push. And I seen them come out, you know. We was on the loud horn, the speakers just announcing it over and over, you know, and I was, you know, really pushing them to come on, come on out, get this job. It's right there in your backyard. And, you know, so a lot of them did come out of there. And those that went in, they came out with a job. So, you know, we're just trying to, I'm just hoping they maintain it and stay with it. And we're just building the economics, you know. That's a real important factor, that we build up the economics, you know. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
Just a reminder, when you become eighteen, you qualify later, and you can also sign up to be on the council once you get rested to vote. So you don't have to wait my age.
Man, that's old.
No, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman College?
I just noticed when I was driving here today that all the codes were picked up from the Town Commons. Is that actually open to the public yet?
No, it will not be open to the public until all construction is complete. There's nothing there except just the infrastructure.
Well, I see the infrastructure there. I see you did a drive-by through there and so forth and stuff.
No, it's not open to the public.
Looks really nice and open, though. I like it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, talking about the park being open like that, I don't think it's a good idea to leave it wide open like that. But that's not my call, I don't guess. But I see a lot of traffic going in there. It doesn't look like you have a business in there.
It has not been closed out yet. I don't know what the projected, excuse me, projected completion, that is, but once it's complete, we'll be barricaded off until we award the bid on the actual amphitheater, which they can use the entrance from the tower as a construction entrance. And then once the rest of it, the package is bid for the landscaping and the pickleball and all that, that it will be opened up and those contractors will be the ones that will subdue it. The only reason it hasn't been barricaded, it was still coned last time I drove out there, but the only reason it hasn't been barricaded off is because the contractor's still going in there taking care of items.
I wish they'd left the cones up, but anyway, that's up to them. Another thing, I kind of sound like Mayor Vaughn here, but my phone's been blowing up. About Highway ninety paving and I'm out the Martin Bluff Road. And I mean, it's literally blowing up. I've never heard so many dissatisfied people with a paving of Highway ninety. I've never laid one inch of asphalt in my life, but I could have got out there and managed that job a lot better. And whoever's managing it, they have started from fifty-seven to the bridge, and they have not finished one square inch of this highway. Not one piece of it. All the crossovers are, you got three levels you got to go across. It's like, it's like going across a railroad track in Passaguda, Mississippi on Passaguda. And that's pretty dead gun bad. And that's, every crossing is like that. They don't finish nothing they started. They could have finished from fifty-seven to here at City Hall and then finished from here to say, past the college and then from there. They won't finish nothing. It's, I'm telling you, I've never laid an inch of asphalt. And I could have got out there and managed that program a lot better than what they've done. And now we'll go to Martin Bluff Road. The contractor is steadily digging up, digging up culverts and pipe and this and that, cutting trees down this big ground. And then piling it up on the side of the road. And now the weeds has grown up five feet above it. Some of it you can't even see. You can't even see the new fire hydrants they put in. I don't know how they're ever going to go in there and weed it or bush all, getting cut it without running over all that stuff and tearing everything up. But, but people are not happy with these two construction sites. And that's all I'm going to say. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Elvin?
Police tomorrow. I thank you for putting on the neighborhood watch from what I heard went over well. So I appreciate the effort. The lights at Martin Bluff, I got several calls, the interstate lights in the right, the lights in that general area, the street lights, apparently they're off. They're all off. They actually got a part that's supposed to be installed tomorrow, Thursday. So it's being addressed, however. Yeah. Yeah, I sent an email a couple weeks ago about it. All right, that's it. That's all, Councilman Elvin.
Thank you. Once again, I just want to thank the city staff who have worked on our summer projects and for our youth, our recreation department and the other departments who helped make those for our youth. I think they've all had a great time and enjoyed their summer. But I think we should all remember our teachers as they have reported back to school with our new superintendent. They all seem motivated and excited. So wish them well. Also, the children, as they go back, please remember to drive the speed limit in school zones. Watch for our officers because they will be out. To make sure you're following those rules, because we do not want any children getting hit from a parent or a resident speeding through a school zone. So please be mindful of that. Also, I want to thank Carlos for staying tonight with his parents for our meeting. We're honored to have you on the youth council and look forward. I know your grandparents are very proud of you to be a part of the government here where our family, the city's named after our families. So I know they're excited about that. With that being said, Ms. Shancy, thank you for your hard work in securing funding for our city and our projects. Thanks for our police department. As Councilman Elvin said, thank Councilman College for attending and welcoming everybody and introducing Captain Chief Bevers. We were unable to attend due to being under the weather. So thank you for that. Y'all have a great week. Stay well. And do we have city manager comments?
Just would like to remind you, please, recess will office the eleventh and eleventh.
City clerk comments? City attorney comments? Thank you. Do we have a motion to recess until August the eleventh at eleven o'clock AM for a budget work session?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Motion carries. We are recessed until August the eleventh.